Abigail, are we ready?
Yes, Mayor, let's do it.
Great. Good evening, everybody. Thanks so much for coming to your city council meeting to see people be sworn in and to see some business be conducted. I went to a wedding where they didn't really get the photos they wanted because the photographer wasn't really bossy enough. So when your special person is up, please feel free to say, oh, wait, please can I get like let's get the photos because this is a cool thing that's happening. Uh, let's turn off our cell phones, please. And as we gather today, we respectfully acknowledge that the land on which the city of Hood River sits is the ancestral home of indigenous peoples. This includes Zanes, Perth, Umatilla, Warm Springs, Yakima, and other tribes who stewarded this land for generations. We recognize the lasting impact of colonialism and commit to working together for a more just and sustainable future. And let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, which is a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so the judge is here. Hi Judge, thanks for coming. We are going to administer the oath of office to Counselor Cavallari, Gaki, Rivera, and me. So should we come out front?
Sure, yes, please. Let me start with Mayor, huh?
Show us how it's done.
Okay, so raise your hand. I state my name.
I Paul Blackburn.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
The City Charter of the City of Hood River.
The City Charter of the City of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Mayor.
Faithfully perform the duties of Mayor.
Of the City of Hood River, Oregon.
Of the City of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance therein, so help me God.
During my continuance therein, so help me God. Thank you.
Thank you.
When I first did this, I had like a huge ceremonial gavel, which was fun, but this is funny. Right?
Mayor, can you sign before you go back to your seats?
Signs.
Yeah, let's make it extra official.
Hey, and Councilmember Rivera.
Hey.
So it's my understanding you want me to just read this entirely and then you're going to read it back and say it?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So I Gladys Rivera do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Or- oh, sorry, no problem. Okay, and of the State of Oregon, the City Charter of the City of Hood River, and the ordinances and resolutions of said city. And that I will, to the best of my ability, faithfully perform the duties of Counselor of the City of Hood River, Oregon during my continuance there.
Yo Gladys Rivera juro solemnemente a que apoyare la constitucion de los Estados Unidos y el estado de Oregon, los estatutos municipales de la ciudad de Hood River y las ordenanzas y resoluciones de dicha ciudad, y que lo mejor que pueda cumpliré fielmente las funciones de concejala de la ciudad de Hood River, Oregon durante mi permanencia en el mismo.
Congratulations. I state your names.
I Amanda Gaki.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
The City Charter of the City of Hood River.
The City Charter of the City of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Counselor of the City of Hood River.
Faithfully perform the duties of Counselor of the City of Hood River.
During my continuance therein.
During my continuance therein.
Congratulations. I state my name.
I Anna Cavallari.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
The City Charter of the City of Hood River.
The City Charter of the City of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of Counselor of the City of Hood River, Oregon.
Faithfully perform the duties of Counselor of the City of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance therein, so help me God.
During the continuance therein, so help me God.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
We're doing a bunch of things tonight we don't do every month, so it's fun and a new agenda. We are now going to appoint a city council president. Main purpose of this function is if I were to miss a meeting, that the the president would chair the meeting, which happens, you know, every now and again. So I would entertain a nomination. Doug.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Rivera for President of the Hood River City Council.
Second. Second by Mitchell, appointed, nominated by Stepina, thank you. I don't know if this is the way the parliamentarians would do it, but like, is that okay with you, Gladys?
Yes, I accept, and I also just want to make a comment that this is the first time a Latina is a council president in Hood River's hundred and thirty year history. So this is quite a historic moment, and I appreciate the fact that my peers are willing to nominate me to be in such a role.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye. Gladys is president. Now we have a new member of our police force is the chief here. Come on up, chief.
Well, I'm excited. Tonight we're fulfilling another position. We have one more. We'll be completely full tonight. I don't know where Ty.
Don, I left the badge on my desk.
I could give him mine, but I better wear it, so I have no problem. Uh, tonight we're gonna recognize Ty Walker. He comes to us from, actually, he was a city employee for almost five years for Public Works. Um, born and raised, born in Hood River, raised in Washington, just across the bridge. Uh, he currently lives with him and his wife and their young daughter that's about a little over a year old. So tonight we're excited to actually swear him in and get him onto the academy. We're excited because we were waiting for several months, but there was an opening next Monday. So it was kind of a splash to the family going, hey, we can get you next Monday. So he said, let's do it. Let's move on. So next week on Monday, he starts the academy. So thanks, sir. So I don't know who, Mayor, you're gonna do.
I think the judge is gonna do it.
Here.
Excellent. How are you?
Doing well. You want me to do an oath here then?
It's right there.
Okay. All right. Are you ready? Raise your right hand. I state my name.
I Ty Walker.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Oregon.
And of the State of Oregon.
The City Charter of the City of Hood River.
The City Charter of the City of Hood River.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And the ordinances and resolutions of said city.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
Faithfully perform the duties of police officer.
Faithfully perform the duties of a police officer.
Of the City of Hood River, Oregon.
Of the City of Hood River, Oregon.
During my continuance therein, so help me God.
During my continuance therein, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you.
But one small thing, I have to wipe your badge when you're done.
Yep, yeah, just sign right there.
Thank you, congratulations.
Alright, the business is gonna get a lot more ordinary now, so folks who came for the fun, feel free to learn more about civic government or feel free to enjoy your Monday night. Thanks so much for coming, everyone.
No, I think that's some mayor ready to say.
So we can't close that door because of public access, so it's always a little bit of like a please visit on the sidewalk thing. Okay, so I will now suspend the city council meeting. We will now convene the Urban Renewal Agency. The Chair and Vice Chair of the Urban Renewal Agency chose to not run for election, so there is actually no one in that role. So the mayor will seize the gavel and very temporarily chair the Urban Renewal Agency and call to order the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency. Our first order of business is to elect a chair. I would entertain a nomination. I would like someone to nominate Doug.
I nominate Doug to chair the Urban Renewal.
Moved by, moved by Grant.
Second.
Second by Gladys. And is my new convention, Doug will, are you able to serve?
I am able to serve, Mayor.
Great. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Mr. Chair.
Okay, and I don't have a script for anything today. This is a pretty easy agenda, it looks like, so we've gone through the call to order and the election of officers. Uh, any agenda corrections or additions, Abigail or Will?
No, uh, no changes to the Urban Renewal Agenda.
Okay. Um, any business from the audience? Anybody signed up either? Oh, we have to elect a vice, you're right. So I guess that's, that's my responsibility to do that now, so, um, that's okay, but anybody, uh, maybe you'd like to nominate someone for Vice Chair of the Hood River Urban Renewal Agency?
I nominate Gladys.
Second.
Okay, uh, we've got a first from Mayor Blackburn and a second from Grant for Gladys Rivera for Vice Chair. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Welcome aboard, Vice Chair.
Uh, and, and yeah, we'll go back to now to business from the audience. So has anybody signed up online to address? No, nobody in the room as well? Okay. That was easy. Um, next up we have the consent agenda. Any discussion from anybody on consent agenda? I would entertain a motion then.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a first from Grant and a second from Gladys. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Okay. Uh, any items from agency members? We'll go down, uh, starting with Amanda. Any items to address for?
No.
Grant?
None for me.
Oh. No, but I just noticed Will is kind of doing that.
Okay.
That's good, it's a little out of order, but we saw regular business items.
Oh, okay, uh, yeah, Urban Renewal, so regular business items, the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Okay, uh, sure. Sorry, I didn't get to get to read through this and prepare, uh, but Will, please, the floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Chair Stepina, uh, members of the Urban Renewal Agency Board, we have three vacancies on the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. The Advisory Committee was established in two thousand and twelve to advise the board on budget, projects, alignment, um, with Urban Renewal Agency plans. Uh, we advertised the, uh, two vacancies at the time, um, and received, uh, applications from, uh, former Counselor Mark Zandmiller, Kurt Ivy, and Tina McNerfy. Um, and then during, uh, that process of interviewing, we also had a resignation from Abby Capabilla uh, on the Advisory Committee. Um, so, uh, and, uh, Tina McNerfy was appointed to the Planning Commission, which took her out of the running, and then Kurt Ivy also rescinded his application. Um, so, uh, Counselor Koki and I, um, interviewed Mark Zandmiller and recommend his appointment, and we're gonna, um, continue to advertise for people to fill out the additional vacancies, um, on the committee. Um, and I'll just take this opportunity to recognize, uh, both Abby Capabilla and Jack Trumbull, who are leaving the Advisory Committee. Uh, Jack has been on the committee since its inception and actually has continuously chaired the Advisory Committee since two thousand and twelve and was even a part of the Heights Business Association when they, um, contributed influence to the creation of the Heights Business District. So I wanna recognize his service. Um, I estimate that he's probably chaired about seventy-five meetings, um, over the course of his tenure serving the agency. And, uh, Abby Capabilla, um, was, uh, has been on, uh, the Advisory Committee since two thousand and fifteen. So has also served for quite a long time and seen, uh, quite a lot of accomplishments, uh, get made in the, um, Urban Renewal, uh, districts. As she, her just, um, schedule with owning her business did not, uh, uh, allow her to serve any longer. So, um, with that, we only have, uh, one recommendation for you right now, which is, um, Mark Zandmiller for the Advisory Committee. And we will continue to seek more applicants.
And do we have to, uh, provide a motion or anything to, to do that?
Yes, there's a suggested, uh, motion to, uh, a motion to appoint, uh, Mark Zandmiller to the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
Okay, alright.
I move to appoint Mark Zandmiller to the Hood River Urban Renewal Advisory Committee.
I'll second.
Grant's first and Anna's second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye. Welcome aboard, Mark. Welcome back, yeah, and thank you so much to Abby and Jack and Amanda as well for serving on the committee. Okay, let's try not to box this up again. Um, and, uh, we're going through any, uh, anything from any of the agency members we were at tall?
No.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me as well, except just to say thank you for, uh, the nomination. I'll make sure to get the script better next time. Uh, yeah, this is a tough job. I remember Mark, uh, bringing, um, a lot of, a lot of positivity to this entire process through this. Um, this is our first time they're gonna be doing this just as a council. So, you know, um, just, just happy to be able to use this tool for some of the most important work that we do in the city, uh, and, uh, look forward to working much with the city and Will on this, and, uh, thanks for the opportunity to serve. Okay, with that, I'll adjourn, um, and, uh, hand the gavel back over to Mayor Blackburn to resume city council.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will resume. Agenda additions or corrections, Abigail?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, when we get to the consent agenda, I'd like to pull two sets of meeting minutes, the November twenty-fifth and the December ninth. Um, being that we had two council members who are not on council at that time, they may wish to abstain, so just wanted to pull that so they have that option.
Good, so to kind of talk myself through that, on the consent agenda, there are items for this body tonight, and the new counselors do vote on those, but because the minutes were from before, we're putting them separate.
Right, so there are four sets of minutes there, two of which, um, were regular council meeting minutes, the November twenty-fifth and the December ninth. So those are ones where they were no, not members, but December sixth and seventh, they were there in attendance, um, as Counselor elects, so I feel comfortable that they could vote on those if they wished.
Great, and I see Dan has come on the screen. Dan, are we good?
Although, you know, um, the adoption and approval of minutes is not really a personal, uh, vouching for these minutes that people personally attended. It's just, are these the minutes? And so even if people did not attend the meeting, they can still, uh, adopt the minutes. There's, there's no prohibition there at all.
Is it okay the way Abigail is suggesting?
That's okay too, but there should be no reticence.
Great, thank you, Dan, appreciate it. So, uh, as Chair, I say, let's do it the Abigail way this time, and good to know. Um, so that was, uh, adjustments to the agenda. Anything else, Abigail?
That's it.
Business from the audience? Do we have anyone to speak to us, Jen, online or no sheet signup? Great, okay, so carrying on, we do have a fairly substantive presentation from Dustis, Dustin and Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor Blackburn and counselors. Uh, materials for this agenda item are in your packet, uh, beginning on page four. This work is included in the council's twenty-three, twenty-four work plan as a critical project. Last spring, we started the project, working on the first phase, which, uh, is an audit of titles sixteen and seventeen of the municipal code, also known as the Development Code. The second phase of the project, the code update, is expected to begin, begin next month. Um, a portion of this work is going to be funded by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. Um, a portion of this work is going to be funded by the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And uh, we're requesting that the council authorize establishment of a contract with consultant for MIG to complete portions of phase two of the project that are not being funded by DLCD. Uh, we're joined tonight by Matt Hasty of MIG. Uh, during the city council's last work session in October, Matt presented the initial code update recommendations based on that code audit that was performed as well as a community engagement strategy for phase two of the project. Tonight, we'll get a refresher on that work. We'll talk about the tasks and timeline for phase two, um, review costs and discuss next steps. I'll hand things over to Matt, um, who has some slides to share.
Thank you, Kevin. Welcome back, Matt.
Thank you. Glad to, glad to be here virtually. Um, yeah, I will, I'm gonna share my screen right now. I assume you can, y'all can hear me okay?
Your audio is good.
Excellent, okay. So I will walk through a fairly brief presentation. I think it's just ten or eleven slides. Um, and Kevin already gave you a good overview of what I'll talk about. Um, the one other thing I'll mention is just kind of um, a little bit more on community engagement and kind of what the goals are and what types of um, engagement activities we expect to to be conducting as part of this process. Um, and I'll talk very briefly about next steps as well, so. I will just roll through here, and I would say, you know, feel free to ask me questions as we go along, but again, it's a pretty brief presentation and I'm happy to take questions at the end as well. So I'm gonna give a little refresher, as Kevin said, about um, the first phase, the code audit phase um, that we went through. And I would say, you know, this was generally um, a pretty iterative process where we identified some initial findings from the code audit. We shared those with a group of community stakeholders. We talked to the planning commission and knew all about them. We revised and updated that those uh, findings um, identified some kind of overarching recommendations um, at a high level and also at a relatively detailed level. Talked to you all again and then, and then finalized those recommendations, and that work happened last year between about March and October. Um, and then since then, we've been kind of finishing on um, kind of the scoping and cost estimating for this next phase, which is the actual code update um, process. I'll say just a little bit about um, some of the outcomes of phase one. So when we presented this work to y'all, this will be familiar for folks who were at that October work session. Um, we had a couple of uh, different elements of that report. We had kind of a summary of the framework for the code update, you know, generally what areas of the code are we anticipating updating based on what we found um, during the code audit, and then what, what were some recommendations where there are some different ways to approach um, the code updates when we get into that process, and so we kind of talked through that with you and got some feedback on that. We generally had recommendations where there were options, but we wanted to make sure that um, that Kevin and Dustin and staff and you all were on board with that, so that was sort of the, what we went through then. Um, and just sort of at a very high level, you know, we are, we are anticipating this is gonna be a pretty significant update to your development code. Um, at the same time, you know, one of the things we heard and we would, we would agree with um, when we were talking to people about this, people who use your code who are experienced with it, is it's got some good bones, you know, it's not, we don't have to throw the whole thing out, so it's got some good bones, a good structure for us to build on. Um, but there will be a lot of changes to it. Ultimately, we do expect some reorganization of the code. We expect to replace some sections kind of almost completely um, with new sections that kind of better meet the city's needs and better serve your objectives there. Um, and then there will be kind of more minor but potentially substantive revisions to other, other sections of the code, um, remaining sections of the code, so it'll be a pretty significant um, process um, in terms of the, the scope of the updates to the code. Um, some of the goals that we have for the code um, update, I think like first and foremost, making sure it's easier to use, you know, easier to use for applicants, easier to use for staff, that it's just easier to understand for anybody who has any kind of contact or um, needs to work with the code, and easier to administer for you, for the planning commission, for staff as well. Um, so that's pretty important, that it just become a document that's, that's easier to work with. Um, we need to make sure that any standards that apply to residential use or to housing are clear and objective. That's a state requirement, and it's also um, just really important that those standards not be an obstacle to developing housing in your community, so that's pretty important, and um, the state has passed a number of different um, pieces of legislation related to housing over the last several years, and um, the state has also adopted new administrative rules um, to implement some of that legislation, so we want to make sure that your code is um, up to date and consistent with all of that new um, uh, legislation and the new administrative rules that have been adopted, so there's a pretty good list of those things we'll be looking at as we're going through this process, and then really important, we want to make sure this is an equitable and an inclusive process. Um, as we're moving forward, I'll talk about that a little bit in relation to kind of the community engagement approach um, and activities that we expect to undertake. So that's a little bit on objectives. Um, again, I'll say a little bit about just sort of the timeline generally. Um, we're expecting this to be um, about a year and a half process. Um, this is pretty high level. Um, we'll ultimately have a more detailed, but hopefully still understandable schedule for y'all um, to see, but you know, we've got the recommendations from the code audits, so we're kind of ready to at least get started on drafting um, amendments to the code, identifying what we think might be the most appropriate structure for the code, where we're suggesting reorganizing things and identifying again which parts um, ought to be replaced versus um, revised, so we'll be over the next, but that'll take a big, a pretty big chunk of time to work through those code amendments, and we'll do that in batches. That's sort of our assumption is that we'll kind of split that up into about four different batches or modules, and we'll kind of, we'll be doing that in a coordinated way, but we'll be bringing those to the planning commission and you and other folks in a um, in pieces, just to make it more manageable um, to review, so. That process, um, we expect to last about um, eight months, um, and then we'll be revising the work that we've done for the next several months, and then ultimately going through the process of adopting the changes to the code through a set of work sessions and hearings with the planning commission and you um, in 2026, so. Very basic outline of the schedule there, but we'll be working on something that's a little more um, at least a little more detailed and, you know, gives you a better sense of the process we'll be undertaking, and throughout that process, we'll be um, engaging with community members about what we're doing, and I'll say a little bit more about that in the next couple of slides, but that'll be ongoing throughout the process. So, I'll say first a little bit about the objectives or intentions of the community engagement that we'll be doing, and then I'll talk a little bit about the types of things or activities that we'll be undertaking. Um, so one, you know, we want to make sure that we're doing this in a way that addresses barriers to participation. One thing you may have noted, um, if you looked at last, last fall, we um, presented a draft community engagement plan, and we're not planning a bunch of sort of big public meetings where everybody's gotta come to us to talk. We're gonna try to get out there in front of people um, where they are a little more than that, so just addressing barriers to participation in that way in terms of people's ability to commit time, but also language barriers, et cetera. That's just an important thing for us. We want to leverage local relationships, events and activities wherever we can. Again, you know, going to people wherever they are instead of making them come to us. We want to make sure we're engaging with Spanish-speaking community members during this process, um, and we can talk about some different ways we um, expect to do that. We want to make sure that, you know, when we're both presenting stuff to people, hearing back from them, and being transparent about how we're um, using what we're hearing and how that's affecting what we're doing, how that's informing the work that we're doing, so that two-way communication, excuse me, and transparency is really important. Um, make sure to the extent um, we can identify how the code might impact or the changes to the code might impact different groups of people, that's important. We did a um, an assessment, a diversity, equity and inclusion assessment during the code audit, and we will do that again um, during the update process to make sure we're understanding how people might be affected and how we can avoid impacts, minimize impacts, and really just create improvements frankly for folks. Um, wherever we can use illustrations or graphics um, to describe things instead of just words, we want to do that. Um, and again, I talked about making sure that we're addressing the community's goals for diversity, equity and inclusion, so those are some of the objectives we have around community engagement. Some of the types of activities, um, you know, these are gonna be familiar to you and for me, kind of a mix of things that, you know, we've done before, you've done before, um, using the city's website to provide information about um, the status of our work, access to the materials we're preparing, letting people know when there are opportunities to talk to us or just saying, hey, you know, if you have comments about anything, let us know um, at any time, so kind of providing that um, that's a feature for, to allow people to comment whenever they do have comments. Um, we'll be talking to you and the planning commission throughout the process, um, in a series of briefings and work sessions, um, we'll be using uh, a set of both uh, kind of small group meetings um, and focus groups to talk to people um, in kind of different, different interest groups as well as the Spanish-speaking community. We did this in the, in the phase one audit, and we will be doing this again, um, using social media, just again, to let people know about what we're doing um, and when there are opportunities to comment or review the work that we're doing. We anticipate uh, doing an online survey um, at some point. We'll have to think carefully about, you know, how to structure that in a way that it's decipherable, understandable, useful for folks, um, so that's important, and then couple some of this with just some short explanatory videos that kind of break down what we're doing, you know, what is a development code? How do people use it? How does it impact you? You know, what are the ways it might change and how might that improve um, things for folks who want to build a house or develop a business or do things of that nature? How might this you know, improve opportunities to build different types of housing? So we anticipate uh, using that as a tool as well. Uh, so those are some of those things. Just kind of a quick overview of the breakdown of costs associated with this project. I won't read off all these numbers. Um, but I'll just kind of note um, that community engagement's a pretty big chunk of the budget um, that the city is funding, and so this table on the left is the portion of the um, funding that is coming from the city. And um, so that's a big chunk of that, and then really, you know, the work of drafting the code updates is the other big chunk, but there's also a fair bit of time here spent talking to you, talking to the planning commission, putting together meeting materials which we'll then use with other groups as well. Um, and then a certain amount of coordination just day to day between your staff and our team. And Kevin noted that this is, this project's being jointly funded by um, the city and the state Department of Land Conservation and Development. The state funded that first phase, that phase one code audit, and that was um, the budget for that was around fifty thousand dollars, and the, for this next phase, um, it's not quite an even split, um, but it's not too far off, so um, the estimated cost for the city is about a hundred and eleven thousand plus, and then for the state about ninety-two thousand, so that's kind of what we're looking at there. And I've just got one more slide and then happy to stop and take questions and um, answer them as best I can, so. Um, as Kevin said, I think looking for um, approval from y'all to move forward with the city side of things. At the same time, we're going through contracting process with the state, and we're probably just a few weeks away from having um, that contract um, approved. I can say more about that later if you want. Um, once we are underway, we'll be putting together, as I said, a more detailed schedule. We'll be refining that community engagement plan that we actually um, prepared during phase one to kind of give us a head start on this process, and then getting started on the code amendments, so. That's it for my presentation, um, and happy to just take any comments, any questions y'all have, and, and again, do my best to answer them. If there's anything I can't answer today, I'll be happy to follow up, work with Kevin and Dustin to follow up afterwards too.
Great, thank you very much. Questions or comments, council? Grant?
In the packet you provided us, there are a number of recommendations or options that are provided. Are you looking for feedback or direction from us on those options?
We're, we're not looking for that feedback tonight. We had a meeting um, with council um, back in October where we reviewed those options um, and got feedback at that point to help us um, refine our scope of work and kind of get started. So we did get good feedback at that time, so we provided that to you so you could see, you know, what it was that we prepared um, as part of that first phase, but we're not, we're not really looking for additional recommendations on those options tonight. Um, and I would say, you know, those are the recommendations we'll use moving forward. We will, there will be other places where we end up probably with some different ways to approach things, and we'll be looking for more um, feedback on that kind of thing as we move forward, but so that that, that was a long way of saying no, not tonight, at least on the um, options that were identified in your packet there.
Yep, thanks for clarifying, Matt.
Yep.
Gladys.
Thank you for being here and for this overview. I do have two questions there. Uh, the survey, is the survey going to be uh, one time, maybe two surveys? Like, how is that gonna work throughout the uh, community engagement plan?
Yeah, that's a really good question. I think um, it, it could work in different ways. Um, we that's a, I think, something that we'll want to kind of talk through and figure out what does make the most sense. I think we assume that sort of um, it would be the equivalent of one, I don't want to say long, but maybe one sort of standard length survey, but it may make sense to kind of break that up into like a series of short, you know, one or two question surveys where we want to get people's feedback on specific issues. And I could see doing that just to make it easier for people to um, to respond to, not put in as much time at any, you know, one time, so. We'll want to talk through staff with that and figure out what makes the most sense, but I think from my perspective, we want to be kind of flexible about how we do that, and I don't think we've we necessarily know, oh, it's gonna be exactly this way or, or the other way, so, and Dustin or Kevin, please feel free to, you know, jump in or correct me if I if I'm misspeaking, but that, I think we can be flexible on how we do that, depending on what seems like will be most effective and make the most sense.
Thank you. Overall, I, I appreciate all the specifics of, of, around community engagement. My second question is um, on our packet page it's thirty-five, uh, there's a breakdown of the community engagement costs. Uh, line item two point two talks about the meetings up to ten uh, virtual meetings, including two in Spanish, and it's about three thousand dollars. Are we paying participants to participate in those meetings, or is that simply the cost to facilitate those meetings altogether?
Yeah, so um, we, our, our plan um, at this point, and I think that's what we'll move forward with, is to work with um, the Nextdoor, who I think most of you are familiar with.
Yes.
To facilitate the meeting with Spanish-speaking community members, and, and they, they do plan to provide stipends for participants.
Okay, great.
Folks, yeah, in that meeting, that's what they did in phase one, and we anticipate same thing, so the, the cost is a combination of um, their time and our time to facilitate and prepare, mostly theirs frankly, but also for stipends um, in any other kind of direct cost that might be needed. And then the last thing I would note is what you see there is the city portion of the cost, but um, DLCD is funding a portion of um, that task as well, so it's actually a little bit more money that's the total, and the, kind of the breakdown or the split between the city and DLCD varies by task a little bit. I think that's one where we assumed you were um, spending about seventy percent, and they were spending thirty or something, something along those lines.
Thank you. It, it is so important that we provide some sort of stipends or pay for those individuals. If we value their input and we value their time, it's important to do so, so I appreciate you and staff thinking of that and, and, and having that come to fruition.
Yeah, absolutely.
Gladys and Matt both, I think we're so fortunate to have Nextdoor as uh, a partner and, and a vendor in this. Is Matt, out there in the, the rest of the world where you work, is, is it, is it common? Is it very unusual? Is it completely standard to have this sort of arrangement where we uh, pay for diversity, really?
It, it's pretty common to um, to do a couple of those things. It's pretty common for us to work with community-based organizations to help um, conduct meetings like that and to recruit participants and kind of use their networks to um, to make sure we're, you know, bringing folks into these meetings who we might not otherwise, you know, get to, and it's also pretty common to um, use stipends and other things like childcare or food, you know, as a way to just help people, people participate and reduce their barriers to participation, so just as one quick example, I'm working on a parks plan for the city of Gresham right now, and we're working working on a parks plan for the city of Gresham right now, and we're working with an organization that works in kind of East Multnomah County called Verde, and, and they're performing kind of a similar task. And in that case, we're working with kind of a combination of Spanish, Russian and Ukrainian speaking community members for an upcoming meeting. So yeah, it's a, it's not an uncommon thing. And I would agree that it, it is really great to have the next door as a, a resource and a, an organization in your community to help work with. And that's kind of what we really try to do is find groups who can, who are in that community and can help tap into those populations. So, yeah, I would totally agree.
A final comment, just the videos and having those on there. I also saw pieces about plain language infographics. Again, just really want to commend you all for the incredible work. We all learn differently. We absorb information differently and just seeing a variety of options listed out is, is really, is very important. So I just, again, appreciate all of your work around this.
Yeah, thank you.
Gladys, I feel like you and I worked together on getting our sort of first subsidies here at the city offering childcare reimbursement for committee participation. Any other comments on sort of that topic that Matt was responding to?
Yeah, I mean, I think I mentioned this to you, you know, years ago. It, it's so important that if we want to bring in people, that we have to look at different ways to compensate for their time and that daycare is an option. Stipends are an option. Feeding and making events family friendly is so important. That way mom and dad aren't having to figure out daycare options. And so good work, you know, it's coming along.
Thanks. Other comments, questions for Matt? Doug?
Maybe not for Matt, but for staff. Just looking at the fiscal impact. City share 111 K and the budget was 167 K. Everybody comfortable with that for contingency and change orders? Is this origin, is this initial 111 and some change? What you expected? And do you feel comfortable with budget as?
Yeah, I think as part of the reason why we're here tonight is to show the budget. Early on, we needed to really reconcile the budget with the state on what they were willing to fund and what they weren't. So as Matt mentioned, this update really represents kind of the city's values in some way. So I think we're, we're pretty good. I think it's on par with the budget that we expected. Part of this meeting is to, you know, it is to reconcile the scope, the work that we were outlining here with the budget. So Matt needs to make sure that we're, you know, we're on the right track in terms of the work that we're going to deliver and match that with the scope and the budget. This is really the first time that phase two has been shown to you at this budget level and this detail. So right now, we're, we're, we think we're in good shape. I think that's, that also leads to what comes next. We will have to prepare a contract with MIG for this scope of this work. It will extend over two budget years. So you know, not all 111 will be this year. It will be through the next fiscal, but just anticipation of what comes next. We're happy with the budget or if we're happy with the scope of work, we think we have a budget that matches up with that. And we will, we'll move forward with the contract with MIG that will come to you at the next meeting if we're, if we're, if you're ready.
Thank you, Dustin. And thank you for being here, Matt.
I don't see any other folks raising. Dustin, what else on this? Kevin?
If you're pleased, we'll, we'll move to contract with MIG and note Kevin's time is not included in the budget. So we will, it may, it may seem light, but we anticipate a lot of staff time in this. We're, we're, we're as committed. We, this is our number one tool. This is what we'll use for the next decade to do the job. So we also have a real investment in time and energy to make sure this is, this works out some kinks.
I actually had sort of a, sometimes examples helped me understand a little bit better. So I was watching the movie Burlesque the other night, and the key there of the whole plot is that they sell the air rights to the building and they save the company and shares happy and all that. And then for me, neighbors started to come to me when some of the very steep lots in our city were being developed. And it's like, well, do you measure from the bottom or the top? And are, are those kinds of examples sort of robust examples of what you're fixing for us, Matt? Or can you give me some like other concepts of like, what's, what, what are we, what are we saving ourselves from?
Well, I think we will look at things like, how do you measure height? I know that's something that's been, you know, a challenge for staff over the years. We will look at we will look at parking requirements. Again, we'll look at making sure that how you regulate housing, that you have a set of standards that are clear and objective that limit discretion. You may still give people the option to choose a non discretionary path, but that's an important piece of this project. And that applies to just a lot of different types of development standards, that kind of clear and objective standards issue. What are some other things? Again, kind of where and how you regulate different types of housing or a mix of housing and, and non residential uses, mixed uses. That's something we identified as important in the code. I think making sure that, you know, you all went through a process of developing standards for kind of like, I would say smaller unit middle housing. And we want to make sure that, you know, you're retaining your ability to kind of put your stamp on that and then also being consistent with where there are state requirements around that, being consistent with that. But also again, you can tailor your standards because of the size of the city you are and to what you want to do in that regard. So I don't know, those are, I don't know if that's helpful, but those are a few examples. Dustin might have other ones.
Thanks, Matt.
Dustin?
Sure.
Sure. I got, I got a lot of them, but I don't know how much time you have, but certainly there's subject matters that, you know, the, the city code and the zoning code has no mention of a cell phone tower. This is actually something that, you know, since 1983, you know, the cell phone is really going to stick around, I think. And the need for the infrastructure and the way that we regulate it needs to be specified because we leave these areas up to chance. There's federal preemptions that are involved. There's real, those are, and those are subject matters that, you know, the state isn't necessarily going to fund. Their directed funding was really intended to deal with the housing situation and however, our code is, has issues that extend beyond housing. So items like commercial parking lots, landscaping standards, that is not exclusive just to the residential issues, but the manner in which we design some of our private property. Our, our issues that need to be addressed, how we approve things. Are we going to require a hearing for subject sites? Are we going to have administrative approvals? Will we have people permitted to go straight to permit for certain uses? Those are things that are policy questions that, that we'll bring to you.
Anything related to our energy council calls?
Well, certainly when you deal with landscaping and trees and, you know, and impervious surfaces, you, you will absolutely go right to, right to that. We may have issues that we want to incorporate regarding parking, EV parking. The state has certain mandates that they've established that say you will, much like accessible parking spaces, certain percentages that must be incorporated into developments. Those, those type of matters will, will get rolled in.
Was, was there, did you put a hand up, Grant?
That was one of my questions and what are the plans or just exemptions to encourage sustainable or eco-friendly building practices? Is that something that's going to be identified here? Or this will help feed that?
Well, generally smaller, more compact development is considered more energy efficient. The R, if you look at impact and footprint, the materials and the production themselves have a large impact to that. So by encouraging housing, we will encourage that. Housing and energy codes are often through the building code. So a lot of those kind of user energy efficient within the envelope is driven by, by the reach codes and by, by some energy efficiency codes that are more parked in the building. Building and physical permitting, those are, those are really out of scope. So we will have certain things that absolutely will have positive environmental impacts. Some of the energy usage and some of the development code extends outside of this, this field.
Thanks. Do you need a motion?
I move to direct staff to proceed with the development code update process, phase two, as presented, including contracting with MIG.
Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by Stapina. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Good work. Thanks.
Thanks for having me tonight.
This seems like one of those, if you don't, if you don't change the way you're headed, you might end up where you're going, kind of a thing. Now we have a couple of public hearings. Now I just want to, I always am a little fuzzy on this. Because we seven are here, if we vote seven oh, we can do both readings. But if it's six one, we can't. Is that correct? Dan?
Let's see, yes. That's what it, it takes to do two readings in one meeting.
Right. So we have three ordinances tonight, so we could do that. Let's see how the conversation goes. So I will now read the script. Is that right, team?
Right. Mayor, so we've got, you're right, we've got two public hearings for three ordinances. So the first one is ordinance 2087. In that one, I do think if there's agreement that you can do first and second reading tonight. The other two, I think we would recommend a first reading today and a second reading at a future meeting just at the request of the planning director.
Great, thank you.
Great.
So here's the script.
Thank you.
Public hearing ordinance 2087 clarifying SDC exemption application process. This is the time scheduled for a public hearing. An ordinance clarifying the process for applicants to apply for system development charge exemptions. We will first hear staff report from Will.
Thank you, Mayor Blackberry, members of the city council. This is really a surgical amendment to our SDC code. Want to make clear that this is wholly independent and separate from the SDC methodology update that the finance director, Chris Anginetti, is pursuing. This is clarifying that applicants for the, for, well, any exemption that's already codified in our municipal code can apply for that before they pull building permits. This came to light because Mariposa Village is getting close to pulling their building permits. And our municipal code right now says that the request can be made within 180 days after issuance of a permit. They pay their SDCs at the issuance of a permit. It's possible that this could be read as anytime before that, but certainly the language saying after is a little confusing. So we have this surgical amendment for your consideration that makes it clear that you can apply for your SDC exemption before or within 180 days of a building permit. And that's really the long and, long and short of it.
Thank you, Will. Questions?
Great. This is a more question, a general question for Will. Is there any particular reason why they can think of in the past speculating? The language wasn't updated or changed to only say after pulling a permit?
Yeah, I, well, one, I don't think this language has ever been operationalized. My research into it looks like it came into existence in 2013. And I believe our last affordable housing complex was built before that time. So the rubber has really never met the road. Often these ordinances will be boilerplate from like the League of Oregon cities. I couldn't find doing, you know, like a keyword search, I could not find that our language exists in any other city, which is kind of unusual. So feels that it seems like it was unique and maybe just not perfectly written the first time, which is understandable.
Jen, has anyone signed up to speak on this? So I believe there is no public testimony. Is anybody here to speak to us on this? In that case, the public hearing on ordinance 2087 is now closed and the city council will deliberate on the adoption of the ordinance. So as we all know, deciding is what we do. So that's where we're headed. But first we deliberate. Comments, questions? Grant?
To me, it sounds like a very simple timing question for us.
Oh, I wouldn't entertain a motion, but I don't want to drive the bus too fast.
I move to adopt ordinance.
Sorry, Will just stepped.
And maybe goes without saying, but please modify the motion to say first and second, if you wish to do so.
Thanks, Will.
I move to adopt ordinance number 2082087, mending the hood of municipal code, section 12 dot 07 dot 0902, add clarifying language on the timing for system development charge exemption requests. And have its first and second reading by title only under, under city recorder.
Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by Counselor Mitchell. These are a little different, so we're going to do a roll call vote. Right? Oh, later. Okay, so we just approved to put it on that. So this is all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Okay, one public hearing down. Yay. We're moving on to the second public hearing. I will read the script. I call to order a public hearing to consider ordinances 2088 and 2089 annexing and rezoning certain property within the city of Hood River. Let me begin with a description of tonight's hearing. First, staff will provide an overview of the ordinances. Then we will take public testimony on the ordinances. And finally, we will close the hearing, deliberate and render a decision on the content of the proposed ordinance. Reading of the ordinances will occur in the regular portion of tonight's meeting. If anyone has any questions about the process as we go forward, feel free to raise your hand and ask them during the public testimony portion of the hearing. The quorum of the council is present. Do any counselors need to declare any conflicts of interest? We will now hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. This matter was, and request came before you and the planning commission at two separate hearings. November 18th, planning commission heard this matter, December 9th. You heard the request is the annex. Approximately 10.99 acres of property within the city. It is contiguous to the city. Within that request, city council motioned and approved to approve the request, directed staff to prepare ordinances to, to, to take effect. You have two ordinances tonight. Ordinance 2088 is an ordinance annexing the property, which needs to be read first. Second ordinance is 2089, which rezones the property from its current state of R2 to C2 and from R1 to R3. Within your ordinance, there's a couple pieces parked in there of significance. One, exhibit B is your findings that came from the hearing itself. And also included is exhibit is a, a series of conditions of approval and a development agreement, which is is exhibit to the annexation ordinance included in that is 16 conditions. Most notably, a condition to prior to development permit request that the applicant dedicate to the city an easement in shape form sufficient to extend the Indian Creek Trail 1,500 feet, as well as some utilities that we already have in there. So that is located on, I believe, page seven of 200 of your packet. So with that, we are requesting approval of the ordinance, only first reading tonight to have this matter heard. After this matter is heard a second time, we will prepare a notice of decision for the annexation that will open up an appeal period. And I believe we have 21 days for this ordinance to become effective after second reading.
Thank you, Dustin. Any questions for staff? Jen, do we have anyone to speak to us on this tonight? Anybody in the room here for this topic? I will now close the public hearing and open the city council deliberation. I'm looking for a motion ultimately.
I move to approve the first reading of ordinance 2088 and 2089 by title only.
Moved by Mitchell.
Second.
Second by Stapina. Any, sometimes just for the folks, we just kind of talk before the motion. Sometimes we talk, there's, there's, making the motion does not mean don't talk about it anymore. So if anybody has any comments or questions, this is still a time for that. Anna?
I just, you went so fast about the conflicts. I just want to disclose that I was on the Parks and Rec board prior to, might have a, I don't believe it's a conflict, but the fact that there was discussion about the Indian Creek Trail before existed. So I don't believe that's a conflict, but I did want to disclose it.
Thank you, Anna. Do you have anything to say about that, Dan?
No, I don't think that that creates any kind of conflict. First of all, the ethics rules specifically say that the definition First of all, the ethics rules specifically say that the definition of conflict of interest doesn't apply when your only interest is serving on the board of a nonprofit organization. And also, I don't see that there's any personal financial stake that Anna has in this, so. Thing is, she's, she's fully informed because of her past experience with the Parks Board. She understands, you know, how S D Cs work and the role that this trail will play and those sorts of things. So just being better informed doesn't mean there's a conflict.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Anna. Any other questions before we vote? The motion is on the, on the floor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Great, thanks. Okay, now consent agenda, which has the curve ball as before, so I'm going to suggest that we vote on the minutes first. So I think I'm within my rights to say we are taking it off the consent agenda, the minutes from November twenty-five and December nine. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda with the omission of mittens, of mittens, minutes. It's been a long day, aforementioned.
Moved by Stapina.
Second.
Second by Mitchell. Any discussion about the modified consent agenda? Right. Gladys, thank you.
Can we please pull item number two?
Yes. Yep, so. So let's let it die. So the easiest way to do this for the the easiest way to do this is let's vote down the motion, and then we'll make another motion. So all in favor of Doug's motion? Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion fails. Okay, now Gladys has suggested we take off item number two, so I would entertain a motion with with, with the less minutes and, and not number two.
Okay. What were the dates on the minutes again? December?
Nine, November twenty-five, December nine.
No, all right, November twenty.
May I, may I qualify that?
Yes.
The minutes to be on the consent agenda are December sixth and seventh, the retreat minutes.
Yeah.
So December sixth and seventh, and then items number three, four, and five. There are four sets of minutes. We're only pulling two of them.
So I move to approve the consent agenda. We will remove November twenty-fifth and December nine minutes from the from council, as well as item number two for the O L C C permit applications approval.
Well done. Moved by Stapina.
Second.
Second by Rivera. Okay, let's try again. Any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Good job. Now we have two more chunks of things to approve here.
I move that we approve the O L C C permit application approval for the Lightwell Hotel and Spa, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Moved by Stapina.
Second.
Second by Poulsen. Discussion. Gladys?
I will abstain from O L C C permit application approvals. This is not a reflection of these establishments, businesses, or their owners. Rather, I object the fact that we do not have enough transportation options for people who visit these establishments. As a result, they may end up getting behind the wheel and putting themselves and others at risk. If we and our county part, our countywide partners are able to provide adequate transportation during late evenings and weekends, I will be happy to start approving O L C C applications.
Great. Any further discussion on item number two? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. We've got one more thing to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes from November twenty-fifth and December ninth.
Moved by Poulsen.
Second.
Second by Stapina. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Woot, woot. Okay.
Did you have any abstentions?
Not on that one. We had abstentions on the, oh, excuse me.
That's okay. I have a little pause there, but I'm abstaining because I wasn't there even though I don't have to be there, but I'm just going to do it this time and abstain from voting.
Yes, abstained from, Amanda abstains.
I did not abstain on advice of council that I can approve the form of the minutes. So I'm going to go ahead and approve the form of the minutes even though I was not at the meeting.
So, so the November twenty-five and December nine minutes passed by six, four, zero against one abstention. Thanks, guys. Good job. It doesn't always go that curvy. That finishes the consent agenda and takes us on. We have no action items. Two discussion items. Abigail.
Thank you, Mayor. Pleased to be for you for your first meeting. And one kind of routine piece of business is that you have a couple committees and looking to see if council.
A couple?
So there's actually a very small list once we get into it. I mean, a number of you serve on community committees. Not necessarily in your role of councillors, but you are out there in our community, and I greatly appreciate that. But really, today, there's just three. It's the Energy Council, the Visit Hood River Board of Directors, and the Saruda Sister City Board. So I had a chance to talk with all of you and gauge your interest. So I don't know if anyone wants to jump in, or I can suggest people. I've, Mayor, how would you like to? How'd you like to move this forward?
So this sheet has under Energy Council in blue, Amanda's name in blue. That means that Amanda has expressed interest. Is that right?
It means that we bullied her into expressing interest.
Told her this. But that's what this is.
Yeah, these are, so I, I prepared for the mayor just a cheat sheet of what I heard from you and, and just where assignments might be.
Oh, I see. So only I have this.
You, it is a secret between you and me.
Okay, so on Energy Council, I have information from my little bird whisperer that Amanda is interested.
Rumor says, yeah, Mr. Jaki might be interested in this.
So Amanda, is this so? And does anyone else have a burning desire to be, to supplant Amanda in that count, in that, in that committee? So let's say that's going to go that way.
Cool.
And we'll have a vote at some point.
And actually, Mayor, by our council rules, committee appointments are by the mayor. So you just kind of need a head nod or a thumbs up. There's actually no motions here. And since she's here in the audience, I just want to point out to you, Amanda, Lindsay McClure? No, oh, sorry, sorry. I was thinking that you were from the Energy Council. I got nervous. So we will connect you with Lindsay from the Energy Council.
Great, so that's, that's the first one.
Yay.
How about Saruda?
Saruda, a number of councillors have expressed interest.
I, I believe that Anna and Gladys have expressed interest, and in less colorful font, Doug and Ben. Does that reflect reality? Go ahead.
I, I, I'm so glad that everybody's so excited about Saruda. It's difficult to choose, but like, I would maybe suggest that the person with the most tenure that's not done it before maybe gets it. And that we sort of maybe rotate this.
Okay.
Because, yeah, it's, like, we're, we're all super happy about it, super fun. It's a really cool thing to do, and, you know, I think that might be a way to do it.
So when you say most tenure, you mean the most senior or the one with the most runway remaining?
I meant most senior, I suppose.
I would also say you don't have, there's no reason why you couldn't appoint two people to this committee if you wished.
Okay. I agree. So Gladys is the most senior, and it says you expressed interest. Is this so? And then the next would be Doug, the next would be Ben, the, the, the least tenure would be Anna because she's the newest, right? But of course, you guys can all go, and you should all go to Saruda, by the way. Have any of you been to Saruda?
No.
I've recommended. It's super fun. And the committee's very nice. So I just I have conflicting information. The font says Anna. Doug's idea is Doug. So that's, that's where I. Yes, Anna.
It wasn't Doug. Need to, to, to see to Doug, and I can have a little more experience under my belt before I throw my hat in the ring.
Thank you. So is it okay if I appoint Gladys and Doug? Anybody going to get heartburn about that? Let it be so. Visit Hood River, we have Doug, and you shared with some.
Yeah, Mark, Mark, Mark and I shared.
Okay. Would anyone, and that seemed to be, that worked out.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyone want to or be willing to share with Doug on Visit Hood River? Do you guys know what Visit Hood River is? That's the like Chamber of Commerce, take the hotel tax money and promote how wonderful we are group. Is that a fair description? Yep.
First Friday downtown support, yeah.
How wonderful we, okay. So I'm going to appoint Doug. Would anyone like to share that with Doug? Yeah.
So there are all, there are also other committees. We're going to discuss all of those today, right? Or just these three?
These were the only three that I think council has like an official seat on.
Okay.
Then on the list, I'd hope that we could also discuss the concept you had at your retreat about agency liaisons.
Okay.
That, and then I'd also shared with you some L O C appointments if you were interested in that. Did you have other committees you were thinking of, Council Rivera?
Well, that, I guess, I just want to make sure that I understand. Am I signing up for one or two? Am I signing up for several?
Yeah, there's not a lot of committee seats.
So where is McKed and Macac in this?
So Macac, the city does not have an official Macac seat. That's actually a county seat. Council Rivera sign is on the Macac Board. That's, Macac is the Mid Columbia Community Action Council. They run our shelter and do other services. But Council Rivera is there not as a city councillor. She's there for her expertise, community experience, and I think her medical background.
Good, so that's actually super useful in the, the concept and context that Gladys is on that board, not appointed by me. That's doing Gladys.
Extra. And then for McKed, our Economic Development, we share a city seat with Cascade Locks. So we have a couple of those. Currently, that seat is occupied by a councillor from Cascade Locks, Denise Emerald Baker. That seat turns over in September, so we'll be looking for a councillor or council member to step up and take that seat at that time.
And maybe you said that Mid Columbia Economic Development District.
That's right.
Being in a small rural community, sometimes the city doesn't do the whole thing. It, we're members of these regional consortium kind of. Okay, thank you. That actually.
Yep, so those are your three official committees to which the mayor appoints and council, and nod your heads and says that's fine.
Good, so I appointed Doug to Visit Hood River. Did we answer, does anyone else want to share that, or did we not quite get there yet?
And I'm happy to speak about it if anybody has any questions as well.
When, when do those, when do they meet?
It's, it's generally at about ten in the morning, virtually or in person, I think once a quarter. It's not very often. Definitely some more informal chats with Katie to, you know, if we have to bounce any, anything off her, vice versa. Never felt it was very, very intensive of a amount of lift. However, Mark and I made sure that one of us was always present, which at ten in the morning sometimes for us to have that day jobs or travel like myself, Mark can make it, or if Mark was out of town, I could make it. So it was, it was nice to be able to make sure that somebody was there. There were a lot of times we were both there as well, though.
First, the, first Wednesday of the month, ten AM at the Visit Hood River offices, which are on second, near second and Cascade, and they're also on Zoom.
And it's not all, it's not that frequent. It's.
That's when they're scheduled, but they regularly.
That's when they're scheduled, but, but they probably cancel a few. So I would say averages, quarter.
And we can do this at a later date also. And so, so Doug's on. Let me know if you're interested in Visit Hood River, okay?
Great. I also try to attend those meetings or at least review the agendas. I also meet monthly with the Visit Hood River Executive Director, so I can coordinate with Council Stapina and keep you informed.
Great. Now, the idea of agency liaisons, I'm just going to list the seven agencies, and then we'll talk about each one. The first one is CAT. This is alphabetical order.
Yep.
CAT, which is the transportation agency, which has its own elected board of directors. Comey Gorge Community College. Yep, C, C, CGC, okay, yeah, Comey Gorge Community, it's just spelled wrong here. County. Library, which has its own elected board of directors, school district, parks, and the port. These are all, you know, sort of our neighbor municipal governments that are, you know, all elected representative.
Right, these are all taxing districts within the, within the city limits. So I did not include non taxing districts like Ice Fountain or Farmers Irrigation, those utilities that also operate inside the city.
So in alphabetical order, little bird of font color says that Ben is interested in CAT. This, got the head nod, yes?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you. Is everybody okay with that? Great. The Community College grant.
And I have to admit that.
Oh, okay.
That this one, so these are kind of my feeling this out. Councillor Poulsen didn't, did not express, actually, no one expressed an interest. It's sad to say that publicly. There was not a, no one had a burning desire to join the community college, so my suggestion would be Councillor Poulsen, if he would be willing to do it.
Great, we got a shore out of Grant. Thank you. The county.
A, a number of folks were interested, and Mayor, I think you and I had talked about, first of all, you having a relationship chair to mayor. But kind of outside of that, having an additional person who meets with the commissioner who geographically represents the, the county or represents Hood River to the commission. So a number of folks suggested participation, but my suggestion to you would be Councillor Rivera as your council president.
Go ahead, the, that's a, awesome. Okay, Gladys, thank you. Moving on, library, Amanda as a professional in this area. Super, that's great, thank you. Schools, Doug?
Unless anybody else, is there anybody else on the list?
Anna's on the list.
Anna, are you active with the, with the school, schools?
I have a kid that goes to a school.
As do I. I, I, I'm, I'm happy to, to defer to you if you'd rather do it.
We, we also have Anna for parks upcoming, so that's, how does that feel, Anna?
I'm happy to serve anywhere that.
Could you do both of those?
I'd prefer to do one.
Prefer to do one. So Doug on schools and, and Anna on parks, we okay?
Yeah, sure.
Also on parks, we had Grant and Ben. Is that feeling okay?
I, I think, given Anna's background, this is a logical.
I'm also happy to pass the choice. I mean, I can share there, too. It's a great group of people, and it's, they've got a lot of work ahead of them, and it's nice to for them to have a new face as well. So I'm happy to do whatever.
And Grant, how about you? You're okay with that? Okay, and then for the port, we have Paul. That's fine.
That's a really critical relationship, so I'd love to see you there.
Does anybody else want to have a, have a role with the port with me? Great, I got the port. Okay. Did, is anybody, is everybody clear enough about this? Anybody confused about what just happened? I think that this, in our goal setting, intergovernmental relationships was frequently consistently comes up as a, as a priority. And in fact, we spent a whole extra meeting with the, the twelve of us elected county and city one evening and hashed out a few things. And, you know, there's some stuff there. It was on the the radio today about the Odell Rural Perimeter, whatever it's called, like as a, as a, as a priority. So there's, there's, there's a lot going on. And these interagency relationships are vital. So this is a really, I think, a super interesting and very important liaison to, to keep, to keep going. Councillor Saunders just left us. She would attend the county meetings like on the regular. Like she would go to the meetings, like good job her. And I'm not sure that that is, that, that's certainly a wonderful bar. You don't, I don't think you feel obligated to attend every meeting, but having that, being kind of the point person, having that active relationship is very valuable for us. And, and in your one-on-ones with Abigail, you can certainly get any clarification or, or, or support or prep that you need.
Absolutely. And I think when we talked about this at your Friday session at your council retreat, we talked about it as like having kind of regular coffee with your main contact, either the chair or the geographical rep of that board, and then maybe just keeping an eye on their agendas, which I also try to do as well. So and then at council meetings, reporting back just what's happening at those agencies. So I hope that it's a rather low level of involvement and work. That's more like just the person, you know, elected to elected personal relationship and less having to like attend their meetings or present to them. But we've never done this before, so maybe we have a check-in, maybe in April, and just see how this has. Uh, and just see how this has gone and if there's any adjustments. Um, also, you know, I think after six months or a year, if you wish to change, that would also be helpful. Um, so that we all get a chance to meet and know all of the, um, you know, all the different board members.
And I will, this seems a, a, a relevant time to bring up, uh, the point I've talked to all of us about is none of us may send Abigail off on a homework assignment because it's our pet thing. Four votes makes a yes. And she is our staffer, not my staffer, not your staffer. So just as we have to be disciplined about not sending, sending Abigail on, on missions. Similarly, we should not be meeting with the staff of these other agencies. We should be meeting with the fellow electeds of these other agencies, staff to staff, board to board. So just.
That's great. Um, so from a staff-to-staff relationship, I will be emailing, emailing my colleagues, their administrators or directors, just letting them know that council is wishing to take this action and then looking for um, for them to provide the information so that we can all connect. So next step, you'll hear from me on just making those connections. That sounds okay.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Any questions on this committee appointments liaisons topic before we move on?
Thank you all.
Go ahead, Abigail.
Say thank you.
That's it for discussion for, for City Council. That's the only discussion item. Thank you.
That's right.
Uh, now we have a couple of city recorder readings. Uh, and just to remind myself and all of us, the first one we, we feel we can do first and the second, the second item of the two ordinances, we will not do first and second. Is that right? Go ahead, Jen.
Your Honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first and second reading uh, for ordinance 2087 by title only.
Moved by subpoena.
Thank you.
Same by Rivera. Jen, roll call please.
Counselor Paulson?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Stupina?
Yes.
Counselor Cavallari?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Aye.
Counselor Gocke? Gekie, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Gekie, uh, your honor.
Aye.
Ordinance 2087 and ordinance amending Hood River Municipal Code, Section 12.07.090 to clarify uh, that request of system development charge exemptions may be submitted before permit issuance.
Ordinance 2087 has passed its first and second readings by title only and will become law in 30 days.
Your Honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance 2088 by title only.
So moved.
Yes, thank you.
Moved by subpoena, second by Rivera.
Counselor Gekie?
Yes.
Counselor Cavallari?
Yes.
Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Mitchell?
Yes.
Counselor Paulson?
Yes.
Counselor Stupina?
Yes.
Your honor.
Aye.
Ordinance 2088, ordinance annexing approximately 10.99 acres of contiguous territory located within the city's urban growth boundary with, and withdrawing uh, portions from the service territories of uh, Westside Rural, Rural Fire Protection District and Ice Fountain Water District, Brookside Pacific Realty Advisors, Inc.
Ordinance 2088 has had its first reading and will have its second reading at a next council. 2089.
Uh, your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the first reading of ordinance 2089 by title only.
So moved. Second, second by Mitchell.
Uh, Counselor Rivera?
Yes.
Counselor Gekie?
Yes.
Counselor Stupina?
Aye.
Counselor Mitchell?
Aye.
Counselor Paulson?
Yes.
Counselor Cavallari? Your honor.
Aye.
Ordinance 2089, ordinance amending the city's comprehensive land use plan and map, a zoning map to rezone certain properties following annexation.
Ordinance 2089 has had its first reading by total only and will have its second reading at a subsequent meeting. City manager comments.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of dates for your uh, reminders. Um, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission is coming for a training on January 24th. I believe that's a Friday. Um, I believe the city recorder put, uh, sent you all a save the date on that, but I think the times um, on the save the date might not be.
I'm gonna check the plan tomorrow.
Okay, we'll double check on that. I don't think the training is as long as the time that we've say, asked you to, to hold. So that's good news. Uh, my second is the League of Oregon Cities, holding a city day. It's Tuesday, January 28th, the day after our next meeting. This is in Salem, uh, at the Capitol. The league will hold uh, briefings in the morning and then afternoon opportunity to meet with our elected officials. This one feels extra important this year as we do have a request before the legislature for a jurisdictional transfer for um, the area of the Heights. Uh, so I believe Will, either Will and or I will be attending and we would love to have an elected official with us. I really think that um, carries a lot of weight with our elected officials. So um, check your calendars and happy to talk more about that. Will, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, we already have um, several meetings with um, different representatives um, scheduled as well.
It's a very interesting thing to do while you're down there. I find it super interesting to get that additional time with staff driving down. Um, it, you'll, you'll learn a lot and it certainly represents our cause well when our uh, relatively volunteer-ish electeds choose to make the trip. So uh, your voice is taken seriously.
Thank you, Mayor. I would also add, you know, we uh, hired a lobbyist to assist with the Heights jurisdictional transfer. Um, she will also be there and really um, providing the talking points. And so it's not that you have to be an expert on this topic. Um, just really your presence would be um, super helpful. So think about that. And then finally, uh, I want to thank you all for our uh, council retreat back in December. You gave up a day and a half. I really, really appreciated that. Uh, I look forward to at our next meeting, January 27th, bringing you a draft of that plan for your review. If you think it's pretty close to fully formed, we'll adopt it that night. If you think it needs a lot of work, I will take that back and then we'll bring it forward in a, a next meeting. But I know there are um, community members and uh, you know, some of our partner organizations are eager to see um, what council is uh, looking for for the next two years. So I uh, sent you very rough draft. If you can take a look at that and give me any comments, um, I would greatly appreciate that.
By remind me when you want feedback?
Uh, my deadline to you selfishly was uh, the 18th, which is next week, uh, because I'm going on vacation. But if, if comments come later, that's fine. It just, they might not just make it in the version that gets in the packet. Cool. I think uh, you know, it definitely took what um, heard from you, the facilitator also provided me with input. Then uh, staff have looked at that and then given me feedback and effective, uh, they're looking at it for a second time. So I'm hopeful that you will see that it uh, reflects that direction that you gave us. So I hope it doesn't need too much tearing apart. But I definitely would appreciate your eagle eyes. Counselor Mitchell, I'm looking to you to check every typo. Thank you all.
Thank you, Abigail. Any questions on this, y'all? Committee reports, uh. Grant?
Uh, Will and I are going to be presenting a little thing, well, not me, just Will, uh, to the Region One Act on February 3rd. That's all that's going on.
Thank you. And Counselor Paulson, since we have new folks, can you explain what the Region One Act is and what that acronym stands for?
Uh, the Region One Act is an advisory committee on transportation, if I remember the acronym correctly, to ODOT. So uh, Region One consists of Hood River, Clackamas County, ti- through Portland metro area, basically. All uh, from all of Metro, uh, Happy Valley, um, all the way over to us. Um, so a- anything involving transportation around the greater, greater Portland area. Uh, it's a, the regional group of elected officials, mostly that get, get together and uh, listen to projects and various other things that are going on and advise ODOT staff or provide feedback um, about those things.
Uh, being being an elected official and being in a group of elected officials uh, uh, sitting in that group, uh, it's somewhat difficult to give feedback. We're not necessarily transportation experts in one. Um, and also uh, we're provided the agendas and packets in advance. Like, for example, this next one in February, we have packets out, but some of the topics come up necessarily aren't on the agenda or uh, we're asked about issues or things that come up that aren't necessarily on the agenda and I have had a chance to ask you guys about. So it's difficult necessarily for me to voice an opinion or a direction on behalf of the city without having discussed it or having any direction. Um, so that, that's, that's the, uh, that's the structure and how that, how that works. Um, so since, since the agenda for this next meeting is out, uh, Abigail can share it with everyone. Uh, it's, we'll have another meeting before the Region One Act meeting starts February. And so if there are any thoughts about it, this next meeting, if there's any concerns or questions or anything, we can talk about it next to the council meeting. Um, and if I have any questions for you in advance that one, we can talk about it next week.
Thanks, Grant, for your service on this. Abigail said something a little while back that I really took to heart, which is ODOT operates in terms of decades and billions of dollars. And often ODOT is the pass-through from the federal government. So the projects, it almost is like winning the lottery when the project gets funded because of project in our city suddenly has this zillion zeros on it of money coming and frustrating how slow it is. But it's an essential uh, that we are at that table and that we get our fair share of that huge pie. So Grant, thanks for being our person there. Amanda?
Um, this is just, um, I don't really understand things, question, but um, okay, committee reports, is this like the committees that we just appointed each other to? And is this, you're on this one? But you didn't, there's three committees or there's only more committees? We were just appointing people to three?
Perfect. Thank you, Amanda. Right. We did not, did not talk about grant B on this committee in our assignment. No, Abigail, can you speak?
Yeah, this committee, um, so ODOT Region One Act is a point, it's appointed by the county, but it is a city seat. And so Counselor Paulson is representing both us and Cascade Locks as cities. Um, until, I believe your appointment's till like 20, I think it's like a life sentence. You're only till like 20, 2027 or until you choose not to run for council.
Feels like it.
And a- at which point, when uh, Counselor Paulson either steps back or his term has finished, the um, seat will then go to an elected official at Cascade Locks. So someone has a different timeline, but it's very similar to McKed in that it's an official city seat that is shared between two cities.
What Amanda said, I think.
We should have had that on the page for context, like.
Are there a bunch more committees that we didn't, that are in, in, in the middle of a term? I just, for context, I want us to all.
Sure. And actually, uh, back in, uh, sorry, uh, back in uh, December, I think I sent you a chart with all such committees. Um, I didn't want to add to confusion in the packet itself, but I'm happy to resend this out if this has uh, reflects the committees that many of you serve. So Mayor, for example, you're on the Housing Corporation, uh, not as a city representative, but you are there or Counsel Rivera. Um, so I can send this back out. That kind of has that overview of like, um, uh, yeah, council kind of appointments. Uh, Regional Solutions is another one of those that is, uh, that maybe a counselor serves, but it's really appointed by the governor.
Thanks, Amanda. Go ahead.
Um, I'm gonna look for that.
And actually, I'll give you this paper copy if you'd like.
Does it distinguish like clearly like which ones are official and which ones are like, you're gonna be on your own time on that? Or is it kind of like it all doesn't come together?
Uh, you're, probably when you look at it, you'll find it lumpy. Uh, I'll make some notes to it and hand it over.
Well, there, I mean, you're, thanks for bringing this up. There is like the women, the League of Oregon Cities, the Women's Caucus, that one's not on there and I'm on that one. I also serve on the Governor's uh, Committee, the Regional Solutions, so that's not on there. So how, do you want us to add to that sheet?
What, um, the uh, Regional Solutions is listed here. Um, so that's the one that um, Counsel Rivera was appointed, but it's a governor appointment. So um, I've reached out to Nate Steice, who is the Governor's Representative as to what the appointment process looks like. Um, he's on family leave right now, so I'm just waiting for him to get back. Um, but I did, I only included the League of Oregon City Policy Committee, so I can add the other one. Let me send this back out to everybody, because it's a lot of information.
Thanks, Amanda. Anything else on that? Okay, Grant, committee. Any more committeeing?
No.
Doug?
No more committee.
Uh, as, no meetings have been conducted for Visit Hood River. Again, that's the, the committee that I've been serving on. Um, and we talked about it a bunch earlier. Um, and, but if we don't have something to report from our committees, we'll just say no report this time.
Thanks, Doug.
Um, okay, yeah, Nate's out, have not had a meeting for Regional Solutions. Uh, trying to finalize date for the League of Oregon Cities for the Women's Caucus. And the Macaque meeting will take place on the 28th, so no additional updates at this time.
Thank you. Ben?
Nothing from me.
Anna, any questions, comments about all this?
I do have a question for our Serruda um, committee. And there was a note in um, the November 25 meeting minutes about a Taste of Serruda fundraiser in March. And I'd just like to know if all of us will have an opportunity to hear about that and maybe participate and support that.
So as, you know, Megan Saunders was the, the rep, I'm, you know, kind of involved. Kevin's on the board, actually. So Kevin, do you have any information for us about this? Not a pop quiz, and if the answer is no, that's okay, but. Okay. The annual meeting is Wednesday night, so we're going to know more soon about the Serruda fundraiser. Yeah. Um, has there been a Taste of Serruda since COVID?
Yes, there has. Um, we've done a couple of these as um, to-go events where people could order thing, order a bento box to go.
Right.
This will be the first one we've had in person.
Since COVID, okay, good. This is incidentally the event at which Pie with the Mayor was in, was invented. So, you know, things happen at these events. Uh, Anna, did that answer your question?
It did. I'll look forward to hearing more details. Thank you.
Gladys.
So then, should Doug and I attend that Wednesday meeting? And that's in the email from Megan, right?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, I'm, I think they've been changing their meeting, so I can follow up with Kevin and have, and send that out to you tomorrow.
Meeting Wednesday at 6:00 PM at the high school room to be determined. Uh, maybe Mr. Usule, maybe Mrs. Usule, maybe the library.
Thank you. And just for context, like the can we all attend thing that Anna had, we should all go to Serruda for the 50th anniversary in 2027. So just put that on your calendar. I'll be there. Uh, great. Anything else, Anna?
Thank you.
Uh, so my committee reports, I don't think I have anything to report. Uh, Mayor comments, Senator Berkeley is coming to do a town hall. I think it's two weeks from, maybe one week from tomorrow. I meant uh, this Saturday. It's one week from this Saturday is what it is. I'll be out of town. Um, I often have MC that I will not be MCing, but the staff is working that out. But uh, this is a fantastic opportunity to go as a local elected to see a federal elected and sort of get a sense of how that interface happens and is super gracious and would be happy to meet you. And so uh, the town halls coming. Uh. I reached out to Katie from Visit Hood River because I had read in the Oregonian that the center market in Salem had a truck drive through the front wall and it was being inve- investigated as a bias crime. And as some of you know, we just, that family just opened one here. They have like 24 of these. And it is a uh, a South Asian family. And I was like, well, this feels bad. So I just wanted them to know the mayor was paying attention. And so I stopped by and Katie was gonna contact them. So that's a yucky thing that happened to a family that has a big business in our community. So. Uh, so anything else I'm supposed to talk about, Abigail? This is, this is a little bit of a structural thing. When folks come and speak to us, we don't respond right then at the public comment. Abigail and I were discussing, we want to have like a structural way to revisit that. And then a number of times, one of y'all have brought up, hey, do we want to follow up on the topic that was brought? So we're gonna kind of add that to the agenda, write it about this point so that we can, and maybe we're not going to be ready to talk about it or decide in that moment about whether we should, you know, do so and so. But uh, I do want to have follow-up with that so that staff and I can get back to them in a timely manner. So structurally, that's gonna happen right in, right in about this place in the agenda. Okay. Council comments, which is truly anything y'all want to talk about. Um, obviously there's some uh, range in how that goes. And sometimes it's more personal and sometimes it's more directly, directly city oriented. But I will start with the, your council comment.
Uh, just first of all, I want to welcome back Mayor Paul and Gladys. Uh, want to welcome Anna and Amanda to.
Uh, just first of all, I want to welcome back Mayor Paul and Gladys. Uh, want to welcome Anna and Amanda to, uh, the deus. Uh, it's, yeah, it's, it's, this was pretty cool seeing like a full chamber, uh, of people and, you know, swearing in and, and all this kind of stuff. Uh, and, uh, yeah, I thank you for being willing to serve again and to serve. Um, pretty cool. Uh, I will echo what the mayor said about, uh, the Merkley Town Hall. I've been to, I think, two of them since I've been on and, um, yeah, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a good opportunity to really sit with some of our other officials, uh, throughout the community. Um, so it's not just beneficial just to meet with Merkley, uh, and hear Merkley speak, but to also see other elected officials from, from other parts of, of the city and the county, uh, you know, within, within our area. So I would recommend, uh, anybody that's not done that before, take the advan- take the, uh, the advantage to do that. Um, and, uh, yeah, just, it was really nice to see also, uh, former counselors, uh, Saunders and, uh, Zan Miller here today. Um, just, uh, we will miss them deeply and, uh, love their continued support, uh, which they've both willingly offered and, uh, um, also thanks to everybody for, uh, uh, appointing me to, uh, the Urban Renewal Advisory Board as, uh, you know, um, the presiding officer. So, uh, I'll make sure to do us proud and look forward to working with Will on that.
Doug raised an important point there is that going to the town, federal town halls, I'm always amazed at how much of a co- context it gives me where people, uh, ask questions, uh, that they want Senator Merkley to do something about. And sometimes it's clearly a state thing or a city thing or vice versa. And so realizing that, uh, our constituents, the people who elected us, have a wide range of, uh, depth of understanding of how the system works and we have a huge opportunity to be a gracious emissary and educator about that. Um, and that job just never ends. And those town halls are where I often see that really highlighted and it's an opportunity to, sometimes people come from the county, obviously, but many times people come from the city and they're the folks who elected us, so it's a good, good time to be. And, and I think the senator and staff, if we make half an effort, will do a good job of highlighting the fact that, hey, we have elected representatives here and that's good for us to, uh, for folks to see us do, doing our job, so. Grant, council comments?
Uh, just a fun, exciting thing. If you're into these kinds of things, uh, the bridge got SHPO approved, so yay. Uh, Bridge is not a city committee or something. I'm on, I'm just on, I'm a commissioner for that separate project. It's one of those separately.
Um, and Council Paulson, SHPO, I think is the State Historical Preservation Office?
Yep.
It's a historical structure.
Yep. Bridge, Bridge is a historical structure and we got permission to remove it, basically, uh, once we put up the new one, uh, which is not a small deal. Um, so yay. Um, that's a yay. That's all. Thanks.
Thanks, Grant. Uh, Gladys, council comments?
Yeah, uh, I will also attend Senator Merkley's Town Hall this next coming Saturday. Will echo my peers. It's important to be there. Uh, helps us understand what some of our local constituents have concerns about. Um, there is a new administration that is coming and there is a lot of fear in our community based on, uh, previous policies and, and current statements that are being made. So I think that's something for us to be really aware of as we continue to move forward in this year. Um, and then I just wanted to thank everybody that was here tonight. Gracias a todos los que vinieron aquí para apoyarnos. Um, it it's an incredible honor to be elected to this role and to continue serving. Um, yeah, everyone that also tuned in virtually, I love you. Thanks for, thanks for joining and, um, I'm excited to continue working with some of you and then getting to know Anna and Amanda a little bit better and go team.
Ben?
Yeah, I go Doug and Gladys's, uh, sentiments. It's, uh, uh, interesting for me. I kind of feel like I'm still, I'm in this weird, uh, kind of no man's land and that there's part of me, part of me that, you know, still feels, you know, relatively new, because I've only been on here for, you know, four, four months, five months, um, but also now have moved up on the seniority ladder as my chair has moved around. Um, so, uh, and also feels a little bit interesting in terms of, uh, somewhat of stolen valor is that I'm appointed, uh, and not elected like all of you, uh, here. So it is, it is kind of interesting, but, um.
You say stolen valor?
Yeah.
Yeah, buddy. Okay.
Uh, yeah, um, but I, I am looking forward to, um, you know, uh, as much as obviously, uh, judging by the level of tiers that I had in last council meeting, very fond of Mark and Megan, but very much looking forward to this kind of exciting new, you know, chapter, uh, and the city long, uh, city council history. Um, I, uh, in terms of the town hall, I've only, uh, ever attended one, uh, as a reporter, uh, which was interesting and it was, uh, Senator Merkley, uh, probably about, hmm, ten years ago. Um, and I think I will likely be in attendance, uh, uh, at this one as a counselor. Uh, see how some other things go, but, uh, looking, looking forward to, to that and, uh, yeah, just kind of, uh, this, you know, new, new council.
Abigail, can you help coordinate with Sarah from the senators' office?
Often they have sort of a V I P before the.
Yes.
We can let her know who's attending, then they can be invited and yada, yada.
Yes, absolutely. In fact, I and the county administrator met with Sarah Schmidt last week, uh, to organize exactly that. Thank you.
And anything you say?
Don't have to, but this is the moment.
I'll make it quick. Um, I will plan on attending the, uh, the, uh, town hall and, um, it's a privilege to get to be here and serve with all of you. I'm looking forward to working with you too. So, um, thank you all for your service and being an inspiration to those of us that are new to this. Um, I have just a somber note about our community. We lost a firefighter and an avid volunteer. Um, it was, uh, Greg Bumper Simpson is a neighbor of mine and he passed away last week. His service will be this weekend. And he was just a huge, um, contributor to our community. And I just wanted to acknowledge that and just say, sometimes it's a bummer that we, um, we, we recognize the service of people after they're gone instead of acknowledging it ahead of time. And that'll be something I'll ask, um, maybe Abigail about is, you know, how do we, how do we honor those that are contributing to our society while they're still here and, um, and also maybe, but he was a really an incredible person and an inspiration.
Thanks, Amanda. Amanda, anything?
Um, yeah, I'll say that it was a great first meeting and I'm really honored to be up here with all of you and, um, looking forward to future working with, together and, um, just, yeah, I really appreciate your welcoming easygoingness. And I wanted to congratulate Gladys on your historic election and it was really beautiful to see the support and love that was shown to you. It was really great, so.
Anything else? Thanks, Amanda. So we do have an executive session. I usually.
Make a point of taking a break somewhere after one and a half. So we're gonna take four-minute break. Don't like go get a coffee and, uh, we'll be right back.
All right. Periodically, we have parts of the meeting that are not open to the public. There's strict, strict rules about when we may do that. It's called an executive session. This evening we have one. We will now meet an executive session pursuant to the Oregon revised statute one ninety-two dot six sixty-one H to consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Representatives of the news media and designated staff are allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room and we will end the public broadcast. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made nor final action taken in executive session. The executive session is anticipated to last fifteen minutes. At the end of the executive session, the city council meeting will be adjourned and no action will be taken. We will now dis-